Good evening, this is Carl Mink-Dorah. This is the meeting of the Hand and Board of Select Land and Board of Health being held in the Townhouse on July 15, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person. They're remotely using video conferencing technology. Please stand while I plug in.
I'm looking to relax, United States of America. It's a Republican Party stance. I'm not a Democrat. It is a Republican Party stance. This one out.
Let's go. This meeting is being recorded. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Show your grandchildren or family members.
None.
Family gatherings.
You would suggest a pay-per-view as a revenue enhancement.
All right, thing, I imagine. Oh, there's someone joining us shortly. All right, first item on the agenda is going to be minutes. Do you have minutes? Minutes of June 24, 2024. I got a storm of dates from the ex-military. We talked a little bit about the even here. Financial review with the town treasurer and the town accountant. Pro itself case of all our requests. We sent a letter to the M O who has been in school district about future agents costs. Zoom operators. We have assumed full now.
Three. Three Zoom operators.
Well, we don't want to use one for ours, or?
What?
No.
I think so.
Okay.
Point is, H1 points to the ambulance committee, the handle control officer, cultural council, and then we'll report it on the news on the time.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? First item on our agenda is going to be to defer the request by the police chief regarding the well at this time. And you know, the well was, the Department of Environmental Protection told us to disconnect the well because it was shared by the senior center. The well for the sprinkler system where they wanted. We still go to the police department. So we disconnected the sprinkler system. And the chief thought that might be able to go another well, but we decided to postpone it because of the cost of time. We're onto the town clerk. Had early voting and appointment of clerks and registrars. No, not registered, we didn't register.
Right.
The other people, right? Wardens.
Warden and folks.
You know that they were.
I'm sorry?
I thought I said we familiar to name wardens from my previous teenager.
Uh huh. Now they got no well.
Yes.
Okay.
What about?
I don't, but I know.
Yeah.
I couldn't do the hours proposed hours for the early voting for both the primary and for the state election. We don't have a big turnout on in-person early voting. We get mail-in, we get slammed. But for in-person, we had one. We have not had a day with zero yet. But we have had days where we've had only one person that's come in. And to have two people upstairs to accommodate this for that. So we, the hours I proposed here more than accommodate what we have to do to be compliant with the state. We've got more hours than necessary with regard to that. But I think they are more than sufficient than what I'm expecting the turnout to be for either of those elections. They do include a weekend day, Saturday.
You have to require, right? You have to require.
You have to do a weekend day, yeah. And so with the first one, with the one in August, we're actually keeping that open until 5:00. Because it also happened to be the last day for voter registration. So we might as well make it easier for people. But we don't get that in the office very often anymore either. As it's done online or through the registered voter vehicles. It's almost a non-event in the office. But the one in October, the one that went for the regular state election, just Saturday, just the one that we require. It's just, as I say, it's kind of a non-event, so.
What percentage mailing did you get there?
Well, last time we had mailing, but it was like about 50% for a state election. For the presidential, it exceeded that in 2020.
So I think that's like 2,500 votes.
We had, it was two-thirds of it for the last presidential one. Two-thirds of it was by mail, but that was 2020. And I was gonna say maybe things have lightened up or people have gotten spoiled. So we still get a pretty good turnout for mail-in. We had over 500 for the presidential primary. I mean, that's, that's a lot.
So the process there is they have to mail in. So you have, they have to mail in. So you have to receive a mail that they want to mail in ballot.
We receive a request, but the state sends out those requests. So the state sends it and says, hey, you want to vote by mail? Just sign this card and send it back.
And they, the state sends the cards to you.
No, the state sends the cards to the voter.
No, but when they want to mail in, I want to mail in. So I send it to you or send it to the state?
You would send it to me. The state sends you the card initially.
Okay, and then the?
You assign it, send it in to me and say, yep, I want all of the elections is here or whatever.
And you gotta mail out the 1,500, whatever you have. And you gotta get it.
And it's not just a ballot. There are, you've got instructions, you add inner envelopes. It's like there's three envelopes of, yeah. And we pay postage for those coming back too.
Postage is gonna be 73 cents. Pay that?
It's, no, it's more than that for these because it's, yeah, we have, yeah, we have a lot in there. We've got the ballot, the instructions, the tuner, the inner envelope. Well, tuner envelopes and envelope itself is mailing. So it has been 84 cents. So whatever that percentage is, it's gonna be going up as well. So we're talking about close to a buck a piece just to mail them out. And that doesn't include any of the work, which is very heinous.
So is it more expensive, you say, for mailing?
Mailing is not up as of Sunday.
No, no, is it more expensive to process mailing ballots? Is this first to a person?
It is, yeah. Because when they're in person, you just check them off. When they come in, otherwise you have to validate and open everything and make sure everything is correct. You've got to make sure that the envelope's been signed and everything, which if they're right there, they're gonna sign the envelope. You say, hey, hey, wait a minute, don't go away, you haven't signed it. But if it's a mailing, we have to make sure everything's been completed.
Well, now I'm mailing by ballot. Election there comes and they show up. They want to vote, yeah. That's a hard to mail, huh?
That happens.
Yeah. And you've got to check it off.
As soon as, as soon as that comes in, we check it off. And it's, it's something we enter into the system right away. And if necessary, when we print that voter list initially, we have as many people entering in there as possible that have already turned those ballots by mail. Because you don't want them, you know. And if, if someone comes in and wants to vote and we haven't checked your mailing envelope, you voted till your mailing envelope is voided.
Then it should put them mailing.
Then it's voided. It's a nice try buddy, but not again.
Somebody's left the ballots. Oh, for maybe a couple of years. Don't follow the direction we just called it.
No, we actually say, screw it up once, let's try again.
You send it back out?
Yeah.
On our dime?
I'm sorry?
On our dime?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's on our dime.
You're disappointed in me?
We do. There have been occasions if they don't sign the envelope, if they send it, they wanted a Republican ballot and a Democrat. Sorry, but this is what you're getting, that kind of thing. So we do reject people occasionally, but we do our best not to. We try to give them every opportunity we can.
So what do you need?
I don't need anything from you except, okay, looks good to me.
Okay, looks good to me. But we gotta vote.
I like that.
We have to vote, right?
Yes.
You're the election official.
One of them.
You have a motion for approval of your own board now is?
Are we approving both sets? The August and the October?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the request to the town court for the August early voting sessions for the primary election and the October early voting session for the state election.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need to appoint election officer and warden. Warden Kathleen Ritz for deputy warden Ben Bump, clerk Tina Duran, and deputy clerk John Plaster.
These people have been in place for a while now.
Double year, double year.
It has been. It's that kind of thing you appointed for life unless, you know. Sorry, John, but he got coming in. Well, no, I didn't tell him that until he said yes.
And everybody's willing to serve again?
Believe it or not, well, actually Ben will be stepping down after, after the election in November. He's already said he won't be doing it again. But we probably got some word going for that. Yeah, well, it's a good thing, this person.
Sure, they'll shadow him maybe during the, somebody that maybe shadowed them during the election.
She already has for this during our regular town election. She already has.
Okay, good.
She will again for the primary and again for November.
Great.
And I, I think she'll be very good at it.
Motion to approve the list of wardens presented by the county.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I should say wardens and services. Got that, that typographical layer corrected.
Or that?
Okay.
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you, Eva. All right, the next item we have is what? Urine transfers. What you got?
What are we looking to meet for?
You have the email that I sent out last night reflecting the current state of the expenditure. Right, some copies.
Cliff, I received it, but I didn't forward it.
I'll take your copy. Easier than, easier than looking on the phone.
Take it. Lock this five. Springing one for now, or are you gonna look at it?
Stick it. Stick it to where you see. I'm gonna do it. Yeah. I guess I don't. I can't, I can't look it on air.
All right, well, let's go. So. Ready?
Yeah.
Well, let's start at the top. I'm not sure how the administration assistant got overdrawn. I'm not sure, but that's where we are.
We had one brief period of overlap between Pam and Pam Warren. So I think that's probably.
You can't come in a couple of days during that transfer too?
Could be as well. I think it reflects a little of the shadowing you talked about happening right quick.
Yeah, I thought Bob was supposed to leave that when he was here out of temp.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I see. We moved that down to temporary help.
Yeah, we're coming into a couple of shadowings.
So we're gonna put that in temp help?
Right.
All right.
Followed down, accessory expenses overdrawn, but I talked to her today about that. She was on vacation last week. So I got that straightened out with her. Minor overages, like.
Eight cents in the select note. The difference in the chairman's salary and the rest of it.
Who wants that eight cents, anybody?
The chairman should get that, don't you think?
I don't think any.
All right, there you go. Keep going.
Yeah, kind of minor things like payroll service, $23. I could, I move that. I think treasurer's expenses could handle that, so that's no problem.
Why is there so much left over in treasurer clerical?
Because it's budget for position or whatever it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
But we do, are getting into deep water here with the information technology and the website. Now, I got it. This week's warrant has $14,000 against the web. So that's really $20,000 overdrawn.
Information technology or website?
The website. Wait, well, because information technology is overdrawn by six, but the website would be overdrawn by about 19,000.
I thought we were waiting till the new fiscal year for that.
What's that, retro year? Yeah. It was a bill date, right? True. Yeah. So we have to figure that out. Now, we have money in postage, office supplies, and the like. So one more. Office equipment and acquisition and maintenance. So we could use those against that, but it's still not enough. The difference.
I thought we talked about possibly warrant claims for the, for the website.
Yeah, I didn't talk about it, but somebody did.
Yeah.
It was put into, it was put into the warrant for this, for today, to be charged to law and claims. But I moved it back because I want actual budgets to reflect the actual expenses. I'm not trying to, I don't think we should take an account that's short or over and then move that to account that has the money without the proper sequence of voting it through.
I agree with that, but I mean, we were familiar with what caused that overage. And that was, you know, Bob, the, I don't want to say inadvertent or whatever.
I understand. I understand. But we can find places to record that. We can make that, we can use Record Clerk. We could go back up to, I think there's 17,000 in law and claims. We could use that. I'm here to suggest, let me see, what's that? Law and claims and zero. I like the, I like the old numbers better.
Yeah, the first, first page.
I still don't know all these old numbers. Yeah, I know it's on the first page. Way down, yeah, there's 17,000 in there. So we could use that up and use the office equipment, acquisition, maintenance, et cetera, to pick up the drinks. So that would be off the books. And this is not illegal. This is actually the law. I don't agree with it, but it's the law. So I didn't think that was something that we should have done.
Right. Now, are you looking for us to do line-to-line transfers? Or is this something you're gonna like just work out with advisory and submit?
Well, I'm looking for an insight, okay? Like if I'm gonna tell you that I can take, you know, we've got 19,000, 19,000 overdrawn or so. Well, I'm suggesting law and claims. And then the other variances I can take out of the office accounts. So that wipes it out. So we'll make the journal entry and print it out and you guys can approve it. Most doesn't have to be done. This is not a do today thing. Last year's closed.
Right, I would say, and Don Greckman from Rock, we were aware that there were several, and we were comfortable with the office technology one, which I believe we had a computer issue that needed to be addressed. And we needed computers replaced and we knew it was going to affect it. We knew about the website thing that Bob had set up the, have a website plus one-time charge or whatever it was. And believe that Austin's with the audio wire or something down, right? Then going further, we knew we were gonna be short on those dog expenses. Remember, we talked about doing it at the Fall Town meeting. We said it was such a minor overage, you'll take care of it.
There's money in the dog accounts to cover the overage. I've already heard that.
Okay, and then there was another one that we knew was maybe Ford Health expenses, emergency management, something like that.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a minor overdraw.
You're ahead of me.
Right. I mean, these are ones we discussed. We were aware you were gonna be able to take care of them. Because you're you.
You mean, I can fix any.
What they say, it's written on your door.
So going down page five, I see where police training is over. That obviously gonna go to police salaries. Police equipment is over. I talked to them about that. That's gonna go to salaries. Or, no, you know what? I'd rather put that to the general expense rather than put it with salary.
So you're gonna make the police overages whole within the police budget overall?
Exactly. That's the recommended way.
Yeah, right.
You know, the training and election coverage, I mean, it's just salaries.
Right.
You know, it's just that they have always traditionally broken it out. And there's plenty of money in salary to cover.
Election coverage, 791. I talked to Scotty about that. And three shifts, four hours, three sergeants overtime. So that was a, something they took advantage of in their contract.
Sergeant overtime is $75. A reserve officer is 25.
Yeah, so the police thing is gonna be totally taken care of within that budget.
Right, the salary and other areas of salary. Take care of it.
Emergency management, small amount there.
Yeah, if we can go back up to 01511, 5420-04.
Where is the account?
Really, Don?
Where in the center?
Shared health services. Isn't that the Finn account that we were talking about having an overage? I mean, now I see an amount. I'm just confused about. Page four.
Oh, we're still on page three. Can I stay in order?
Well, they were done with three.
I'm confused as enough as it is. So let's go on page three.
I'm like, what page I had? We're on page three and we got emergency management, 46.
This is the one we knew was gonna be short.
Right. The only thing I can say about that is.
It was on 46, but.
Just like, I'd say, would you put that up with the fire, the fire equipment? Because they didn't spend anywhere near the entire amount.
Ready?
Yeah. Yeah, ambulance. I'm leaving that as an over.
Turn on the end of control.
Yeah, within those three accounts, the 1023, before 1920, can be handled out of the dog damage. So I'll clear those out. And general highway expense is not overdrawn. That's an old number that I gotta talk to him about. He keeps using an old number, which I've taken out of the books, but he keeps on using it. So I'll talk to him about that. Because there's plenty of money in general highway expense down below to take care of. Doesn't even, yeah, yeah, so.
So Cliff, is that a real expenditure or just?
Yeah.
It's not in the wrong place.
Right, right. And he, he just places it. I gotta give him the right.
Pretty good number for snow and ice there.
Very good, yeah. 50,000 less than last year. And then with transfer station monitoring and testing.
That's, I think that's better than what we thought was gonna be, Craig, right?
I thought we were thinking 120.
Let's see, what do we do with that?
Street sweeping.
I am surprised there's money left on street sweeping. I thought that was a contract and they pretty much did the whole thing. Happy to see something, yeah.
So what's your pleasure on the testing?
I don't see anything, I don't see anything unfortunately that's related to it that has an overage.
Yeah, let's try to keep it in the same so I can do street sweeping for that. Keep it in the same general activity.
Right.
Take care of that. Then we have.
Our center.
Yeah, I'll take care of their maintenance fees are quite high. And I don't think there's, I don't think there's been someone there that really understands it since Annie is out. And they're just paying the bills and doing it without paid attention.
At least that plenty of money clerical will take care of it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's most interesting.
The computer maintenance, is that for their special program?
Yep.
So it's nothing to do with the regular IT stuff?
They didn't, they, they didn't have to. I think that's the leftover from the annual fee for the maintenance of that software.
Quite a bit left in gas.
If we stretch down to the employee benefits. When you look at it.
Before you get done with that, again, now we're at the one we talked about. So, Don, we were aware that there was gonna be a shortfall in the shared services, right? Isn't that that line?
No, I don't.
It's a different, different line? No, remember where Finn came back, they renegotiated. And it was, here's the number. Is that the point, the appropriate 25 to cover that?
That's what we pay law and order. Yeah, yeah, that's what we pay them. I think we thought originally we have 25,000 because that was the year before, so that's what we put in. But it was only 10,000 this year.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a good number.
Right.
That's the true up.
So now we have the employee benefits, which of course we can use longevity unemployment compensation and property and liability insurance. It takes about $33,000 off.
Is that the hard number, the 88? That number one-time repaying, that's close to 100.
But we got, yeah, we already done what we paid. This is all cash out. So I could take care of approximately 20, $200 out of that. So we're still looking for 66. Possibly use the reserve fund, so. I believe it's 41. I was looking at conservation. Yeah. Because we don't use all of that ever. What's that, 24 if I can? Yeah, 24. So I can cover 24 out of conservation.
What about accessory reserve for mandates where you have?
That's a, that's an appropriation from town, from the.
Okay, yeah.
Town meeting, it's an article.
You gotta agree in a kind of term if that's what we save by the prepay.
That's true.
That'd be a good one.
They are.
That's the employee benefit. That's the employee benefit.
Yeah, okay. All right, so is that 58?
How much?
79. So I'm looking for 35, 30,000 maybe. And again, between those and.
Give it a big.
Conservation clerk.
Conservation clerk, we can cover. Now.
Is there, is there an issue with losing the salary? Because of the police transfer salary.
Is that the 3% thing?
Strike that.
You have a question?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Audits will be in front of the hearing.
Yeah, this is not an audit year.
You got an 18-minute gap on this.
Okay, Ruth.
Wow, dating yourself there.
Yeah, but you know, overall, now, there were some accounts, and I talked to the town minister. There were some accounts that were $38, $12, $13, et cetera. And I just kind of wiped those off myself within the appropriation. I think we needed to hold that. But the ones I look in that we didn't talk about was election expense.
There you go, Ruth.
That's why I'm here.
Oh, you know what? The expense from the election covered it from the mandate. From the mandate reimbursement. Technically, the mandate reimbursement comes in. It is supposed to be a general fund. In other words, it's an estimated receipt. But last couple of years, I've been saving it. And this is a perfectly logical place to use that mandate. So I've made that change already. I took it out of mandates in the special revenue account, moved it against the appropriation.
So there was an overage, but it didn't show up anymore, you're saying?
Right.
Okay. So do you need a motion? Sounds like you need a motion at least for the reserve account money if you need that 25,000.
Right. What I could do is print these out. Excuse me, I could print these out and get them to you so you can review them in front of what you have. And it doesn't have to be done today. We've got, we've got a lot of allow that we can do.
So we're going to meet until the 29th, is that going to be a problem?
No, not at all. No, because these, these will, these will eventually go towards free cash. But we take it from one, giving to another, so it's still going to come out the same. And I'm not going to file before August for free cash.
So in terms of the advisory, you need to vote 25 and mine to the.
Right, and I'll do a printout of that for you.
Well, I'm going to suggest that the advisory vote that.
Yeah, that's a separate.
Yeah, certainly, because I won't be available on the 29th.
You're opposed.
Opposed. I mean, we can walk down the hall and vote this then. That will take care of your. You don't need advisory to vote on other lines.
Well, yes, because it's a, it's a mutual agreement. Technically, the department that's being hit is supposed to be here to agree that to use the account. We've done that, but.
We never.
No, we don't tell them. No, but, yeah, no, it's a combined agreement. So I'll do yours separately. I'll do this on its own, and I'll get them out probably later tonight.
Do you think, Doug, there'd be a possibility of a quorum of the advisory for a meeting on the 29th? Even if you're away, Kathy, John, and somebody else?
Yeah, so again, I'm, I'm, I'm open.
I believe I need to, so, reach out, see Heather and Sandra are available. And this week, I'm sorry.
Does there both have to be confirmed or is it a meeting?
No, I mean, am I coming back on the 29th? Have you signed on this?
I don't think you need to be here.
No, I don't, but I'm even going to email you the, the actual suggestion. And, and just say we approve. Or I can't come, I don't deserve.
Yeah, I'm sure they say.
It's two separate.
We don't need to be here on the 29th with you guys, so long as we get it beforehand, we can meet whenever you want, before 29th. So long as we.
Good time, we got the.
You want us to go around the reserve transfers night?
While you're out here.
I have a question for the board. There was some discussion about the fall town meeting date. Has that been determined yet whether a quick day of the week will be out?
No.
We were kicking around the idea of the Saturday, and we did mention that.
Yes, you did. On the Saturday that you're likely. I'm supposed to be running an event in Kentucky, so I was curious if you were going to make that radical change without any input from the townspeople or whether.
How do you feel about it?
Actually, I was talking to Eva, and I thought, somebody says that's a really good idea. When she does her census next year, she can put a little question in there. Would you be more likely to attend a town meeting on a Saturday than a Monday? And then you'd have data to go on. And the other, the second question that somebody mentioned to me is would you be more likely to attend a town meeting if we had licensed daycare available? I thought two good questions.
Well, I can't find that. I didn't agree that I thought Saturday was a good day. Or I agree that putting something in the census wasn't.
Having data is always a good thing.
Why would we want to provide licensed daycare?
To get, get better attendance for people who have kids.
That's the biggest complaint I've heard from individuals with garrison school system. Other council. Is that they don't go because they can't.
Now, the demographic in this room may not show it, except Brian, but.
He has to get a vote, yeah.
I mean, that's been an issue for ever. That was the biggest complaint I heard.
You know, if we had, if we spent $3,000 and had 50 more people show up, it would be worth it. Especially younger people being involved. I don't know, I, I don't know if, if anybody cares.
I recall we had that meeting at the Baptist church, and we had daycare there, and it was well-used. That's why we had that huge attendance.
Wasn't that, wasn't the high school involved in that?
There might be a cheap way to do it, but.
It certainly demand a reimbursement, which we haven't received yet, but it's supposed to be, what, 5,000? Thirty-five hundred this year.
Well, no, that's for the primaries.
Yeah, I can, well, the 5,000 will be part of that.
That was the 24, the next one would be the 5.
So can you make a decision on this one?
I think, I think we should put it on the, so we need to put it on the January 29th or whatever, make our call. I would say personally, I like the Saturday idea because I thought it would increase attendance. I can see your point about the daycare, as Craig said, doing the same thing. And if we made that, well known.
And I appreciate your anecdotal opinion that Saturday would be better. But, you know, there are people who are busy on weekends too, sports and everything else. So I just don't have any.
Not going to make it perfect for everybody, I know that.
I want data. I don't think you should make a dramatic change without data.
And I have to, I don't know that having a lot of weekends can make a difference. If people have a problem with daycare, it's not going to matter whether it's a difference from the evening, out, weekend or evening. I think that, he, someone, someone is.
I just want to interject one thing. I've gotten some, I don't want to say negative feedback, but some concern. People are having informational sessions held in a church. Sponsored by, you know, whatever committee, I think it was the.
Master community.
You know, I don't know if it was because it was air-conditioned, I don't know if miniature chocolate was available, or if you were expecting what, but some people have a real problem attending government-sponsored informational, but being informational or what have you in a church. Because, you know, we're not puritans anymore. Some of us are, some of us aren't.
Whoa, 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 we're not puritans anymore?
Said some of us are, some of us aren't, but back in the day, in colonial times, puritans always used.
But we should have held town meetings in the church.
Meeting house.
We should have town meetings in the church.
They did. They did.
Our town meeting.
Right.
Well.
Yeah, we had one, yeah.
Two, two.
Two.
Because of the thing, the reason it was held in the church was because the, they had a video presentation on it, they couldn't do it here.
Did they have done miniature chocolate? Could they have done in the auditorium and miniature? Could they have done the video presentation in the auditorium and miniature?
So, so the thing is, it's church estate, people are concerned that by going to a church, they may somehow receive some kind of.
No, I think it's the, the, um, principle behind it. So just, just saying, don't shoot the messenger.
Thanks, Ken.
I'm just, I'm just. Did they, did people assume?
Uh, no.
Did they look at it on Zoom?
I don't know.
So yeah, the 19th sounded great?
Nineteenth.
It's going to be on the ballot to get rid of my job anyway.
You could apply.
I think it was down till you retire.
I don't want a 45-hour week job, thank you.
Monday. By the way, I'm still a Monday there.
Well, I'm happy. That's good.
And so if I was to say I'm looking at dates, either 21st to 28th probably. You're away the 21st, you're saying?
I'm actually away both. So. You're talking October?
Yeah.
You mean the 19th to the 20th?
Sure, we're talking Monday, he's talking Monday now.
Oh, if we're back to regular Monday.
I can be here for Monday night, either way. I can get back from Kentucky for Monday night. I'll be tired.
And you ought to go to class, huh?
Take it in the truck.
We'll decide, we'll decide next week.
Yeah, oh, no, what?
Two weeks.
I mean, it's end of week. Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. You don't want to get the same response.
Decide now.
But how do you think?
You can make a decision not to make a change.
It's reasonably anticipated.
Okay, then we have to pick a date, though.
I don't care what the date is, I just want to know what date it was.
He just doesn't want to say it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to entertain adding to the agenda on the 29th, setting the date for the, for the fall town meeting to be October 21st.
Okay, I'll make it over there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Table TV agreement.
Gentlemen.
Table TV.
Do we have autographs on it? I don't know about John. The days are coming on Tuesday, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Table TV agreement.
So there's an agreement from Attorney August that he provided to the board. And what I hope we could talk about tonight was paragraph two talks about town responsibilities. And there's an assumption in the agreement that the town wants to pursue PEG access funding. And it asks the town to create a budget, to create a PEG studio, and to operate PEG system, essentially. Yeah. And I guess my question is, is that something that the, that the board wants to pursue? Because in talking with Attorney August, he, he made the point that a lot of time, in, in most cases, the need for the PEG funding is what drives the, the request for the franchise fee. Franchise fee being different than the license fee, which is 50 cents per subscriber. The franchise fee is, I'm still a little bit confused by this. I, I think it's a little bit different, but I know there was recent regulatory rulings that, that talked about the PEG access money or capital money being taken off that 5%. There's a 5% cap on the franchises, that, that value's taken off the, the 5%. But really, the question is, is this something that we want to pursue in terms of providing community access channels? Because if it's not, then I think the, the negotiation, the cable negotiation is, is different. It looks different, right? It might just be renewing what we have, or providing some other provisions in terms of cost control for maybe senior citizens or things like that.
But the PEG access fee, then you're just going to pass it on to the homeowners.
They have the, they have the right to do that, yes.
This happened about seven, eight years ago. And we looked at, it was going to be a half percent on the cable bill, and the three selectmen could make that call at that time, without any public input. And we were against it because we felt it wasn't right to change everyone's cable bill without getting, getting input in. And that was what was going to fund the studio, if you will, at that point.
Wasn't the question originally, are other towns with community access charging the same rate as him and without community access? So if they are, does that mean they're going to increase the bill to be, for what reason, right?
Yeah, so the limited bills that we have in town and out of town, the, the, the customer charge was the same. There was one town, the town I live in, there was a, a separate line item that talked about a, a PEG access fee. But the charges were the same. It's, it was a little bit difficult to decipher because there were different rebates and promotions, but that, that.
How was Wilbraham doing? I mean, they have the Wilbraham Public Access that funded from a cable church?
I do have Wilbraham bill. It's, that's, that's one of the things that the, our, our former cable council was going to, was going to look at.
Because I do know this, and I think it was, um, it wasn't, maybe it was Hatfield. They mentioned, oh, you can watch the meeting on channel 191, which I think is the same thing that you can watch the Wilbraham. So it seems to be a consistent thing with their public access. Okay, these are three channels we give you for, as part of your PEG screening.
Or you can come to YouTube.
Well, that's sort of the, the other.
But then who's going to be running all that, you're not going to think use IT part.
We're about PEG access.
No, I'm saying that if you're saying, okay, forget that part, putting it on cable, we'll do it all via YouTube. Who's got the extra time for that?
We're doing it, is what my point is.
I know we're doing it, but we're not doing it enough. I mean, right now, we've got Brian and Lauren doing it. But we could be doing a better job of it, but they haven't got the time to be doing that. So if we're going to be saying that's it, then we fund the IT line a little more and pretty much get somebody to do it.
I think it's better something we can fund internally rather than adding a, a funding mechanism that's not, that's out of our control.
I didn't like putting a surcharge on people without the input. That just bothers me.
Right, we could do it internally if we wanted to and with the input. We have an entire funding online.
I'm sure you can get us a grant for 50,000.
That, that's, that's for something else. But, but I mean, I mean, we had talked in the past about, about doing some ascertainment process in terms of having a public hearing and.
So are we looking at this agreement without section two? Is that what you're saying?
If, I, I think I would want to have a conversation before, before we sign this with Attorney August, if, if we're not going to consider, you know, PEG access. If we're not going to pursue a franchise fee. And see what that conversation's like, because I, I think that makes it, the process much simpler.
I know a couple of years ago, we tried to get together a committee to do community access. And there wasn't a lot of interest in people helping out at that time.
Probably, it's nice to have volunteers, but that's why Wilbraham doesn't.
There was somebody spearheading it and trying to say, hey, I'd be grateful to.
You pay people who get a commitment to do it. All right, so you're going to do a little more research. I would, my sense is, I'm not too keen on that one, too.
What about the right over, the right-of-way?
Well, that's where my confusion still lies in terms of, in terms of the franchise fee. The definition of a franchise fee is, is it's the right to use the right-of-way, and there should be value to that to the town. But if that's connected to, to some showing of need, you know, for PEG access, then if we don't make that, that showing of need, then it's, then it's more difficult. This is what the attorney was telling me. It's more difficult to ask for whatever, 3% of gross annual revenue.
Is there any area of town that is not serviced by charter already?
I, I don't know the answer.
When I was looking at the internet statistics in town, there was maybe a handful five to eight homes that were unserved.
Not able to be serviced, like they're not vision or?
I, I, I don't know where they were, because when you look at the statistical numbers, it tells you that there's a certain number who don't have any access.
So what if I went back to, to Attorney August, and I, and I asked the question that, and I suggest that the board's not keen on, on pursuing the PEG access, a, a studio and that kind of stuff. But can it still, what can it get out of a fran, what can it get for the franchise fee? Is that, is that a fair?
Well, I'm not saying that, but that, I charge a loan to the customer.
Right. And then I can.
Years ago, we looked at a certain amounts, because at that point, cable was the option. And we said, okay, we're going to be able to get, with the 50 cents or whatever's going to be per bill, okay, we're going to income this much. That number's dropping on an annual basis. So the town would have to kick more in and more in and more in. And you're into, as people drop cable, we're servicing with that option a smaller percentage of the population. And as Craig said, if we go to a streaming type thing, people who have cable still have streaming as well. Now, I think, like you say, we'll get a better bang for the buck, that type of thing. Instead of this, we add 10,000 to our IT line, hire somebody who's going to prepare IT streaming content for the town's presentation, whatever, and give them equipment, and here's a laptop, and it's not on Brian, it's not. for the town's presentation, whatever, and give them equipment. Here's a laptop, and it's not on Brian, it's not on Lauren, it's. Maybe expand some of the Zoom type thing. Basically, you make it a more full-figured position. It's kind of what you do, because it's our obligation to present to the public everything you do. That's the key word.
Yeah, and to me, it seems like the, the technology's there to, to really broadcast any of these meetings, as long as it's recorded through Zoom.
Right.
Without expensive equipment.
Without Zoom, you know, to YouTube.
Right.
We can skip the whole Zoom thing.
So I'll, I'll follow up with the attorney and put back.
Like I say, I think we could be doing better in some of these Zoom things, better videos. Yeah, exactly.
Cameras everywhere.
Pretty sure we get, we get that new building, that we got the old, the new one, the four A V. Well, that's, that's further on the agenda, sorry.
Wasn't originally, one of the original contracts here required?
That's what I remember. In our contract now, it says that they would supply all of it, our current contract.
We have two, uh, one-day liquor permits for the Senior Center, again.
Ask them what's over.
This, this one is Thursday, August twenty-second, for a one-day permit for the Scandic River Iris's annual meeting reception. Five P M. to nine P M. The other is for September tenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, for a one-day permit for a community program guest speaker.
solid.
After three hours of doing it, you'll see how the, how the speech goes.
Might not be much speaking.
Motion to approve.
On favor?
If the board wouldn't mind, I may, uh, I'm gonna do some research and see if there's anything in the state that typically these get maybe an annual license or something with maybe just a, a report to the town administrator of the events or something. I like knowing about them, but it's a little on them to get these things to happen. Is that okay?
Yeah, and then also it takes, you know, someone has to lead them out.
Right.
One way paper.
Yeah.
Of course, there was a, a change in the law that's gonna allow, uh,
Happy hours.
Happy hours on local, uh, under, uh, pursuant to local regulations. So discount, discounted. No, you, yeah, you, you can't do it, you can't discount alcohol in Massachusetts. But now you can't, subject to a regulations that you, that this board might adopt.
Chicken wing, chicken wing guy, Tom?
And the Senate did pass the bottle bill, right? Its version of the town sign, ten cent bottle bill?
One out of three.
All right, the next line of my, next line of my put on is, um, regarding the, the five-thirty Glendale Old Water Testing. The Conservation Commission, as you know, has been hearing, multiple hearings on the solar side up in Glendale. And they've had a, uh, tomorrow, I think on the seventeenth, they'll be, they'll be voting on it. They have a lot of, they had a lot of, of, uh, conditions. And one of the conditions that they had originally was they have water testing at an annual basis for PFAS and other substances. And the applicant asked if they could change it to three, three to five years. The draft by the, uh, Conservation Commission changed it to three years. What I'm wondering is, the board of health and the selectmen, given the, the fact that this, the Brooklyn's true where our water thing is, and we've also had some PFAS, and if we shouldn't recommend, we can't tell them what to do, but we could recommend it, and then we think, maybe they should go back to annual testing for that and for E. coli.
If we want to base it off what the D E P is requiring us to do with the transfer station, it's annual testing. And then on the first sign of any, that, that triggers quarterly testing.
Right.
So I think three to five years is quite a long time.
Right, and I agree that, you know, possibly after maybe three to five years of annual or biannual testing, you know, things still look good, we might consider. Just like the state will consider modifying the testing schedule, but right now, we need to be stringent on the testing.
I don't, I don't want to say no, I'll put that provision in there for.
No, I'm saying, I'm speaking to us, you know. But right now, I think we should be stringent on the testing.
I think we should be very, very strict on that. Yeah, I, I would be prepared.
Okay, so I will transfer, so we want to take a formal vote, or shall we just, as the A is on, transmit to the, to the Conservation?
I read your comment. I agree with your comment. I endorse your bringing it back to the.
I would, I would think that was a formal vote, so it's on record.
So we'll leave this then on the, somehow in the, in the record, basically, that, that probably means that, or whatever. So I, I motion that the, the Don's, Don's written suggestion back to be the official endorsement of the board's welcome, and board help.
Same.
All in favor? The other issue is, what we have here is that Brian and I met with the superintendent of schools and the deputy superintendent regarding the, the Thornton Burgess lease. And they informed us that as of January first, and we already know that there'd be no students in the building, and by June thirty of twenty twenty-five, that all staff and administrative offices would be moved from the building, essentially the building would, uh, they'd be discontinuing the building. The issue that's kind of arisen is the, in the min- in the Wilbraham, um, lease agreement, they have a specific clause that says they can take over the building once if they stop at where education is. We don't have that clause in our agreement. So we would need to negotiate a agreement with them. Brian, you had a suggestion that we could.
Yeah, my read on the lease is that the purpose of the lease is, is for educational purposes. And if the, the district ceases to use it for that purpose, then I think the town could, if it had to go this route, could, could determine that that's a material breach of the agreement and, and find a district and, or at least argue that the district is in default, and then that triggers a, a mediation process. And, and then if the mediation's not successful, then it triggers a binding arbitration process, but it's a, it's at least action that the town could take to, to try to get the school back.
This is the feeling that the school, we would not vote to release the building. I mean, based on our meeting there, it seems that they may have.
I, I think they're leaning, I, I understand, as you've expressed, that sometimes it can be difficult to get a, a larger committee to actually make a, a movement, if you will. And we're trying to be kind in, in what we say here. But I think with the conversation before, that they're acknowledging the fact that they're spending money on maintaining the building that they can use somewhere else. And that's what we mentioned before. And I think the board may have mentioned, as you said, or they said, once they're not using it for educational purposes for five years, it triggers a rehab. And we can make a strong argument that they haven't been already. They may be talking about moving out, what do you call these group?
Transitional students.
Transitional students are not part of the educational process. So if that's what's been in there for three years, I would submit that they've actually been out of education out of the five. And if they haven't, they could be looking at the fact that even if you want it back in two years, you're gonna have to rehab it. Do you really want that kind of money? Look at the money they were talking for Memorial when they were talking about that. It was like, almost tear it down and build again. So I think with those type of arguments, they're intelligent people. They see the big picture. I think it's worth pursuing in Zoom world.
I, I think we have to push it as quickly as possible, because, you know, it's like inertia, you know, they're not doing anything, even if it's.
It's gonna lose steam.
It's gonna lose steam, and I think we need to push it. They need to make a decision, because we need to know, because it changes so many things that we would, would have to do. So.
So we have, so you have meetings, I believe it's the seventeenth and nineteenth, at the school with Time Bond?
Yeah, Time Bond will likely be there, uh, both days to, to do their inspections and conditions assessment. They're on site.
And I'm gonna ask Aaron Osborne to give me a, how much it's costing to, you know, to make the cheap utilities.
They always, remember, they had a, a list of capital needs that they had in their list. Obviously, the big one is the parking lot, the roof, you know. Obviously, we know the boilers and, you paid the boilers and you did green metal, it should be in good shape. Somebody brought up the question about the roof before, and I will say that this was brought up several years ago, I'm gonna say probably eight years ago. A company was interested in replacing the roof if they could have sold on it. At that time, it was pretty new. The board wasn't really too interested in that. But there may be something going forward. You see more of it now with the program, even the state was going through. That might be something worth doing.
It's still, there's a few high schools in the, uh, in the, uh, eastern part of the state that have sold on their roofs. They hear the whole school.
I can remember the parking lot thing, you know, the reminder building, they've got the parking structures with the solar on and stuff, yeah.
All right, so the, the big concern is pushing forward, you know, these bigger decisions. I agree with that.
So when you do, did Time Bond give you any kind of sense of after their walk-through, are they gonna need a month, two months, three months? Or they can't make that call until they walk through?
I haven't seen, yeah, I haven't seen the project schedule yet.
I mean, is, is Time Bond's determination gonna change our stance on the building? Or are we, what are we looking to achieve out of that?
I think, I think, I think it would help them, you know, make a decision to get them off the dime a bit, too. If Time Bond comes back and says, oh, my gosh, this is, it hurts us, but it hurts them.
What, what if it's favorable? Because the building's been maintained fairly well. They say, oh, we have a very valuable option now, based on that report.
Then we go, I hate to say it, we go the other route. Look, I'm sorry, it's been three years without educational.
I agree. I'm just planning for whatever question I might have.
You haven't many, you know.
But I'd like to see if we could all get to the same point together without being.
So my, I guess it goes back to my, my question, like Biden, Fraser, right? Do we need to wait for Time Bond's report before we make the determination in our path forward?
No, I don't think so. We already indicated that, look, this is what we're doing. We're taking the initiative on this part.
So should we start planning the, the next steps as Don's looking into, rather than waiting for Time Bond?
Well, I'd like to maybe make it, ask the chair to maybe reach out to John or Michelle, and Michelle, and say, we'd like this to be an item on your agenda, perhaps even on a monthly basis, because this is proof of us. And we don't want us to go, oh, six months from now, look again. We're not working that long.
They can hold them accountable to making a decision.
Basically, that's it.
Now's the whole point of our meeting, is then, make a decision.
What do you think, Tom?
Yeah, okay. I like that. The other thing is, we talked about is the four thousand nine hundred and ninety-dollar bill. And I, I think I sent, uh, sent emails, sent the email and see.
Yeah.
And the position is that they would like us to pay it, but if we're gonna take a hard stance on it, they wouldn't work. They wouldn't say they'd work for that.
I, I mean, I, I think they can. Yeah, I, I think they can, they can cover it, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and, um, you see the email.
I think so, yeah.
It's a regap of prior years and stuff, yeah.
And so they, you know, we sent them an email saying, no, look, we, we got some money left over, we want to fix something. And they asked how much was it?
Yeah.
So we did kind of like put it out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So is the board willing to endorse the bill and then close it off going forward?
I'm still no.
I know, but we did tell, hey, by the way, you know, we have this money. Is there something you can fix at the school that would help out? And they fixed something at our school. But we did kind of open the door.
I'm indifferent to it. Like, I see both sides of this.
We asked them, and they said, sure, we can do it. They didn't come to us and say, hey, can we have the four thousand? We told them, hey, you got four thousand left, can you fix something?
All right, we did, we did tell them a couple of years ago that they have this money.
Right.
I, I defer to you gentlemen.
It doesn't look like he's gonna make a break what Clifford's doing either, you know.
We have, we have had enough.
Yeah.
Probably don't try to find the extra cash.
No, I think he's gonna do. Anyhow, I'm still a, I endorse the bill, and I'm looking for action from them. Okay, we're partners in this. We take care of our own, and we want our school back. Anyway, it's in the bill folder. It's in the bill folder. At some point, Jane would like a second, or she'll just pass it back. So we can leave it at that. Um, we'll, okay, let me go to the Slackman reports.
Slackman report.
Okay, we'll say there's something that's coming up that may need Brian to look into, and I think, I don't know, Julian mentioned it to you, about eminent domain?
No.
Okay, there may be something that may come to the board's attention about, is that something the town could, there's an issue with kitty line and getting it turned over to the town. And so one thing that's been suggested is the town interested in acquiring it by eminent domain. I don't know enough about it. I know the town has done eminent domain for road improvement. You know, we took the corner by somewhere so we could straighten it out. We've never taken an actual road by eminent domain. So I think it's something probably more appropriate for Brian to talk to.
Why would I be taking the road? Don't, don't want to.
There's a, I don't want to get into it. There's a legal thing.
I know nothing about it.
I only brought it up because, I only brought it up because it was potentially something that was gonna be on the fall, not meeting the law. And I don't think at this point, it's gonna happen in the normal course of events, or the normal accepting.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm, you know, why can't we just accept it like they would normally?
But not given.
Yeah, I, I think we'd still have to go through the, the layout and acceptance process. The issue would be, if I'm, if I'm reading it right, the issue would be, instead of them giving us the easements for the street, we need to acquire the legal interest in the street.
For the public good. You can't just take it without a public need and a public good.
So it's not technically a town road while we're following it then, right?
Yeah, like we always do with any subdivision, except for, you know.
Is this in a road or a driveway?
It's a road, built through a road.
It's likely a private road at this point, right? It's a private road.
And as everybody living there said, I'm paying the same taxes as the guy who's on the regular roads. And when it's a town road, you're gonna be getting the same service you're getting now, really. It's get picked up, the road gets crowded. It's the longest.
I guess we need to hear more about what's going on.
Yeah, the woodland, the woodland way, Charlotte, Vermont.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Is that where the Keenan is?
We have a right-of-way driveway, and there's three houses. The three of us share the cost of allowing it.
We have a couple of those in town, but, uh, there's one hole, place that wraps around, wraps around, yeah. Great job.
Thank you.
Take a cookie.
All right, what else you got?
This is exciting. All right. Uh, Building Committee, thanks you for last week's endorsement. And before, they actually have two members that'll probably meet with the committee and then come back to the board selecting for an appointment, one of them to be appointed. I think, uh, some other committees possibly might have some people who I heard there's interest in planning. John shared with one, Brian shared a couple more, so. Because that's definitely a need that we need to get that back up. And the biggest need of the, your huge share is conservation.
Conservation, no problem.
I think it's, Mrs. Locke was at the last meeting, wasn't she?
Yeah, she was. She's, she's gonna be very good, but just, you know, most people.
Right. Certainly, certainly very appreciative of Judy staying out of this.
Vacation was good. I have nothing to report.
Oh, sorry. And the parade was fun. Thanks, guys.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do it. Did you march with the, the five oh first?
Which?
The five oh first?
Five oh first?
The stormtroop, the, the Star Wars script that was there. Have you read that?
No, they were back in section three.
Thought you might be in the Dark Rider costume.
No, I was up with your buddy Richie Neal and Dom. They asked about it.
I'm sure they did. Master Plan Committee met for the first draft. They have a first draft, the vision statement, we're working on that. There's been two hundred and twenty-two responses to the survey. They want to get it up to three hundred. So it, it's coming up pretty good, actually.
Can you vote twice?
No, you can't, it's right in the paper. If you do it online, you can't vote twice.
Oh, Craig's got the IP secret. He can figure it out.
You gotta do it in paper and then online.
And the Conservation Commission we just talked about, we're meeting, we're meeting. And our administrators, Florida.
Yep. I got some.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, the Water District received a letter from N H E S P, Natural Heritage Dangerous Species Program, uh, requiring that a botanical study of an endangered or rare fern, uh, be completed. So, um.
Is that the invasive fern they're trying to get rid of in Nothingburg?
I hope so.
It's an invasive fern. I thought that was something to do with that tree.
I, I thought they were talking about some ferns and invasive plants last time they were here.
Oh, 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 for that whole man. Oh, 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 for that whole management, pitch pine management. Oh, anyways, I, I did reach out to Jen from Time Bond to get a cost estimate for the botanical study, and so that review's on hold.
Did you see her response?
Yeah, they don't have anybody in house, but they'll reach out to consultants. Um.
Would, would that be in the M V P report?
No, uh, because this is just the area around the pump house. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think they'll get it, no. I, I can double check.
You don't want to walk this way?
Um, I forwarded around, there's a, uh, what's called the E E C G B grant, so that's energy conservation grant. That we got notice of, applications are due, uh, if we want to do a regional application that P V P C is looking to put together, that'd be July twenty-sixth, if we're going to do it individually, the, uh, deadline is August sixteenth. So this can be something for energy conservation, clean energy generation, it could be planning or construction.
And, and I know, I asked you about, this has nothing to do with green communities?
Correct.
Because I remember last time P V P C was, they do something, we had a partake in.
Yeah, it's through the, it's through D O E R, the, the pass, those federal pass through, it's through D O E R. And he already got, he already solicited me to, to try to, you know, get him to become a green community, and I didn't respond. Um, so. So it's fifty thousand dollars for, for planning, or seventy-five thousand dollars if it's building up of construction. I don't know if there was something in addition we wanted to look at for T W B, uh, but it's just something we should talk about. Not, it doesn't have to be now, but.
Right, is that, is this something we can apply for and decide how to do it later?
I don't believe so. I think it needs to have a specific plan, so, it's like if, you know, the condition assessment for, at T W B is going to be, it's going to be fairly high level.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we want to do, you know, a detailed energy audit or some planning if we want to look at solar, you can have somebody, some more depth planning.
High efficiency something.
Yeah, so, something to think about. Uh, we had the site visit for the fire station generator last week, we had five, five, ten Ds. And the bits for that are due, uh, July twenty-third.
And how we're planning for that?
The, uh.
Or the install was.
Oh, the install, that's something that we still need to talk about, um, when we get the bits back. And as we mentioned earlier, Time Bond's going to start the condition assessment at T W B on the seventeenth. In relation to that, I did come across when I was kind of cleaning that office a little bit, there was a twenty fifteen very high level conditions report about T W B, so it kind of gives us an idea of what the, what the condition is and what the issues are, because I don't think much has changed in there.
No, they did say, I read that report, it was pretty good shape. The bones were good.
Yeah, they, I mean, they did have some high level recommendations, uh, but it was interesting to, kind of a preview as to hopefully what Time Bond will give us. So. So about it, and then, well, we're, we're hopefully planning the twenty-ninth, uh, July twenty-ninth, a meeting here. Uh, hopefully we can do the planning board appointment before the, uh, executive session, because that way we'll have both boards here anyways, we'll have the planning board and the board of selectmen here, July twenty-ninth meeting.
Yeah, I don't know, I could say, I know they've heard from one chap, I, you mentioned a couple of people were interested. They do have a posted meeting for.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth. And where they're going to invite the people to come to their meeting first, and then bring them to the twenty-nine.
Oh, you mean, oh, for the, for the appointment, the board appointment, yeah. Yeah, the way that the process is spelled out, it's, uh, it's joint meeting and. For the appointment, yeah.
I think if they're planning on inviting the people to, they would encourage any member of the board selectmen to come to their meeting and ask questions of the people, in a sense. And then we're planning on other things to plan out as well, right, executive session?
Yeah, the executive session, where they decide on the time of the day, or maybe like.
The moderators here. That's all I have.
What do we stand with the bridge, M D P bridge?
It's M V P bridge?
Yeah. The Tyler Bridge, the Tyler Bridge, whatever you want to call it, yeah.
Um. The, the hearing, they're going to hold the hearing, and I think it's August fifteenth. Cons, conservation question. That was all part of the.
Did you tell them about the water line?
Nope, it's still a mystery. I'm going to go, I'm going to go do the shovel later and try to find it. What can get through that plays an ivy?
What? Plays an ivy? Oh, thanks.
Want you to drink?
There's the buzzer. Just made it.